The mailman, can he approach the...
If I...
Are you ready?
Yeah.
We are now.
They wouldn't do that. All right. It's 6:30. I hereby call this meeting to order. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Announcements, awards, special recognition, we have none.
I have an announcement.
Ah, yes.
I have to leave early tonight to catch a flight. I booked this flight as late as I could so that I could be here for as long as possible, but if y'all see me get up and walk out, it's not because I'm mad or anything, it's because I do have to go.
Thank you. Any others? Public comment?
We have two individuals sign up to speak. First person signed up is Keith Larson.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Again, I'm Keith Larson of Plancier Place in Peachtree City. Heavy trucks on neighborhood streets is of concern to many Peachtree City residents. I propose that it is in the best interests of our residents for the city to revise and update in 2024 City Ordinance Chapter 7816, Heavy Trucks Prohibited on Certain Streets. The ordinance was last updated in 2005 before substantial village developments and annexations were begun or completed in Braylea, Wilshire, and Wilkes-Moore. I have sent to you today by email a map and a copy of the current ordinance with the proposed conclusions. The pending constraint of all traffic during the 74-54 intersection improvements projects makes it imperative that this update is completed expediently. Construction will put additional pressure for heavy trucks to seek bypass routes through our neighborhoods to avoid the delays at 54-74. In Georgia, state routes for trucks are by definition designed for heavy truck routes. From my research of public ordinances within Fayette County, Peachtree City and Tyrone have both specifically designated prohibitive truck traffic on specific streets and roads. The county and other communities have not. This action could have already been proposed and moved forward for your approval if a traffic safety committee had been established as recommended by the multi-use citizens advisory group in 2021. Recent car crashes and vehicle incidents highlight that traffic safety issues and public education efforts should be periodically reviewed and addressed with recommendations by resident panel, as is and it is the best practice in most other cities in the United States. Therefore, I implore to you, it's up to you, our city council, to direct city staff to begin the process of updating the heavy truck prohibited ordinance. The streets that I specifically would recommend be included in this ordinance update are Holly Grove, Robinson Road, and the portions of Macduff and Sonoya Road in Peachtree City, as well as, surprisingly enough, Crosse Town Road. Thank you very much.
Next person signed up to speak is Tom Crofton.
Hello. My name's Tom Crofton, and I have lived in Peachtree City for 48 years and am very proud of it. Peachtree City has been a wonderful experience for our family. We have three kids that grew up through the public schools, and my oldest is a colonel in the Air Force doing his service. I've also, I'm a big runner, used to be, has been. I've run 53 marathons. I was one of four of the founding fathers of the Peachtree City Running Club. And that was my joy in life until I started having knee problems. So after having knee problems, the doctor said no more running, I found pickleball. I don't know how pickleball is less drastic than running, but that's what the doctor says. So my love of life now is pickleball. I do a lot of walking and some bicycling, too. But three and a half years ago, my life flipped over. I had a heart attack, and I really shouldn't be here. I'm on borrowed time. I'm 74 years old. I ruptured my Whittaker artery, and I should be dead. I was 20 minutes away from the hospital, and I died in the ambulance. So as you can imagine, I cherish every day now. And my concern now is with pickleball and having enough courts in the city. And I know you all know about this issue, but it's a personal issue with me because the clock is ticking on me, and I'm on borrowed time. Right now, the six courts at Log House are great, but there are only six courts. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, you might see all courts full at 10 o'clock in the morning with 15 people waiting, okay? So obviously, we need more pickleball courts. You saw in the survey, the preliminary results, pickleball is way up there as far as everybody wanting to play pickleball. Right now, I have to go to Tyrone because I can't go all the way down to Log House and find out I can't play. So I go to Tyrone. They just built eight courts. I go to Noonan. They have 15 courts, and they're building four more on top of that. I go to Griffin sometimes. So I would really like to see Peachtree City, I don't, we voted in in this SLOSS money, $750,000 about a year ago. I have not heard anything about what's going on as far as a plan. I would like to see a plan with target dates so that we can get it done before I die, you know? The other idea is...
Your time has expired. Thank you for your comment.
Getting rid of the Log House courts and converting them back to tennis courts, that's not going to help increasing pickleball courts. We get 10 pickleball courts, minus six, that's only four.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Any more public comments? No. Agenda changes, council?
Yes, because I have to leave, I move to amend the agenda to move new agenda item E, number 42405, ordinance number 1218, above new agenda item A, to reorder the new agenda items.
Sure. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Minutes, A, March 21st, 2024, regular meeting minutes; B, March 21st, 2024, executive session minutes; C, March 28th, 2024, special called meeting minutes; and D, March 28th, 2024, executive session minutes. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda items, A, PD hardware, software, annual renewal and brand name approval; B, surplus and disposal of decommissioned vehicles/equipment; and C, start time change for the second city council meeting scheduled in April, May, and June. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve all three...
Is it not on? Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve all three consent items, A, B, and C.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Old agenda items, we have none. New agenda items, E for 2405, ordinance 1218, city council meeting procedures and rules. Just a reminder that this agenda item pertains to placing an item on the agenda and not deciding an issue. And Councilmember Johnson has done a tremendous amount of legwork, so I'll turn the floor over to Councilmember Johnson to present the item.
So which one first? The motion first?
Sure.
Okay, all right. So the motion is, I make a motion to approve new agenda item A, ordinance 1218, with the following amendments. See, amend, agenda item request, city staff with approval from the city manager may request to have an item placed on the agenda by filing such request in writing with the city clerk prior to noon on the Thursday preceding this council meeting. The mayor or any other, or any council member may introduce an item in accordance with Section 236i under Council Staff Topics. Consensus must be reached in a public meeting by the mayor and council to determine if further investigation and research into the matter is warranted prior to bringing the item back for an official action at a subsequent meeting. Such items may not be placed or discussed again on the agenda if the council has already decided the issue within 180 days.
That is the motion. Do I have a second so that we can have discussion?
I'll second. I have some comments as well.
Certainly. Now we can begin discussion. Ms. Johnson, you want to take the floor?
Yes. Sorry, I have a little bit to say here, so I'm taking a drink really quick. Okay, so if you guys will bear with me, I've, I put a lot of thought into this, and so I'm just going to read this to you. It says, "The proposed ordinance that is on the agenda tonight would require the support of three council members or two council members and the mayor to put an item on the agenda. Since this proposal, it has been suggested that this change in procedure could be perceived as a quorum reaching a consensus behind closed doors. There were other scenarios discussed, including just two council members, two council members and the city manager, two council members and the mayor and the city manager, none of which seemed like good procedure. The city manager is not an elected official and thus should not have veto power over what can be put on the agenda. After much thought and many discussions, I heard a procedure that sounded like a viable option. Before I talk about this new procedure, I would like to quickly state the problems I see with the current procedure that we have. When a council member places an item on the agenda, it lacks transparency as it does not include a memo from staff giving an explanation and thus causes confusion for our citizens. We get emails from citizens thinking that we are trying to do the exact opposite of an item's purpose. Items are at times hastily added to the agenda at the last minute and become items for us to vote on the very next week, creating a time and labor-intensive process as we seek to understand the item's need, purpose, quality, repercussions, and how we stand on the item. Much work is created for an item that is possibly only supported by one council member. Council members also have spent taxpayers' dollars by going straight to the city attorney to get his approval by passing staff for an item that possibly, again, only one council member supports. Our city is blessed to have citizens who care and who pay attention. I value transparency as many of them do, and I feel that this proposal gives them transparency on a silver platter. It also gives solutions to the issues just mentioned. So I propose that items are added to an agenda by a majority of council during Council Staff Topics in an open meeting. This would not be an official action. It is consensus on a future actionable item. It allows the public to see who is putting forth an item and who supports it. It allows our council to discuss the need for an item openly in front of our citizens without the pressure of an official vote. Staff would then have time to investigate and work on the item and bring it back at a later date for council to vote on. With this process, each item would include a memo giving clarity to every item in our agenda packet. With the help of our experienced staff, we will have quality items that have a higher likelihood of having council support before it goes to legal, saving our taxpayers' money. As individual council members, we are not allowed to direct staff. It always takes three of us to compel staff. This gives us the opportunity as a council to give a clear message as to what we want them to focus on. It also holds us, the elected officials, accountable to our citizens. This is not in y'all's notes, but I'm going to add this real quick. What I also like about this is it allows our citizens, say if they want to come to me and add something for us to discuss in Council Staff Topics, you could have come to me today, and I could bring that up tonight. So it gets it in front of all of us even quicker, and we each still have the ability to bring this topic forth for any of us to talk about during Council Staff Topics. So I ask for the council's support in this proposal that I believe that will be more transparent and unifying, allowing us to have better communication in front of our residents. It saves our time, our staff's time, and our taxpayers' money. I feel that this proposal is a win for us, for staff, and most importantly, our citizens.
All right. The council?
I have some comments.
Sure.
Laura, as far as I'm concerned, we've discussed, can you hear me?
Yeah, you're good.
We've discussed and debated who can put items on the city's council, city council's agenda for at least two years now. Last year, we all agreed that the version that any citizen has, all he has to do is request an item be added to the agenda, and all they need to do is get another council member to agree. You may not remember that, but that's what we put into the ordinance, and it's worked fine for the last year or so. We continue to receive criticism for not allowing enough time for the citizens. We continue to review, and several council members, like Laura, have offered suggestions for improvement on how we can do this faster and more openly. We have, we just heard from Councilwoman Laura Johnson, and that's been vetted by several of us already. As we all have recall, there are several cities within the county, and they all have some combination of city council members, city manager, or mayor required to get an item on the agenda. But I'm personally grateful for Laura's approach because I think it's very open and very easy to put things on the agenda, in fact, the same day. So now I think the council is ready to vote.
Other comments, council?
I have comments unless you want to go first.
No, you go right ahead.
This appears to me to be an insult to council members and an attempt to block them from redressing their or their constituents' grievances to this council. It is odd that it was brought to the agenda, excuse me, by the mayor immediately after I placed the TDK resolution onto the agenda for the March 3 meeting. I only withdrew it at the behest of the mayor and councilman Holland. Does the timing of this change indicate the mayor was hoping to gain enough support from this council so she could block me from bringing the TDK resolution back onto the agenda? Because that's what it looks like to me. As I look back as a citizen, I placed an issue on the city council agenda to address disenfranchisement of voters in Rising Star Precinct after the special election. And then almost immediately, a proposal was made to change the procedures for citizens to place items onto the agenda. A citizen must speak during public comments and then ask to have an issue added to a future agenda. But it would only be added to an agenda if the mayor or one of the councilmen agrees to add it. Keep in mind, if you change this ordinance, it will have a direct impact on a councilman sponsoring a citizen item onto an agenda. Two council would be needed so, in addition to the one who's making the proposal. So this proposal will take away free speech from council and citizens. Let's all remember the rights of citizens and council members to redress their grievances to the full council, and as proposed by the mayor, we are facing a direct attempt to take away the rights of the elected officials of this city. And she is asking this council to vote to take away their own rights. Aside from this being a veiled but direct attack on my abilities to function on behalf of my constituents, I view it as a direct attempt to silence me and every member of this council to bring issues to the agenda, especially if the mayor does not like you or support your ideas. The idea that there are too many frivolous items placed on the agenda and that it costs too much is a sham. There are few items placed onto the agenda by any council member, and they are being placed there to execute the business of the city in the best interest of our citizens. As an elected official, I have the right to bring items to the attention of council by placing them on the agenda for discussion and a vote. A council that has no voice is not a council. A councilman must gain support from two other councilmen to put an item onto an agenda, must conduct too many conversations with other councilmen behind closed doors to get their support. I feel the process of having all those conversations risks having three councilmen say they do not support the idea, and then in total darkness, outside the view of our citizens, council members can conduct the equivalent of a vote by a majority of council to block an issue. Changing this ordinance runs the risk of violating the open meetings law by requiring a majority of council to discuss it prior to it being shown to the public. Any council member who votes in favor of this proposal is casting a vote to take away their own right to function on this council as a council. I think you can tell that I do not support this proposal at all. And Laura, thank you for trying to do a compromise, but I don't support that either.
Mr. Maker, can you clarify? Have you had a chance to review this verbiage, and has this been passed muster with you legally?
Yes, I was able to review it, and the change to having the discussion in public as to the items alleviated a major concern that I had with the previous proposal.
Thank you. Mr. Holland, do you have any comments?
Would you like to go first before I go?
No.
Okay. Thought I'd ask. First of all, I've used this many times. I've said that Peachtree City is a special place. We do things a little bit differently. We allow the citizens to come up and redress their grievances openly, come to talk to us. Our phones are out there, call us. So I think that special place is what we got to keep in mind as we think about this. That's point number one. Second, I completely agree that Laura did a great job in trying to find a compromise, and I think it's a great choice of words that she put together, and I commend her for that hard work. But unfortunately, this is a solution that is looking for a problem that doesn't exist. Last year, we had, and maybe the year before because I wasn't on it, but on the council then, but last year, we went through a lot of discussion to come up with what we have today. It is a solution that's worked for a year, and I commend that, and I support that. So quite honestly, nothing is broken. We don't have a problem right now. Why would we be looking for a solution when we don't have a problem? So in my mind, although I commend completely all the work that Councilman Johnson did, she did a fabulous job, I just can't support it.
Thank you. I think this is masterful, and I appreciate that you've even talked through this with staff. Do you have any concerns about this, Justin, Mr. Strickland?
Well, I mean, whatever council decides is what staff will do.
I appreciate that. First of all, to be crystal clear, Ms. Brown, you and I met in my office the afternoon of Tuesday, March 26, and I ran this by you. And then the next day, on Wednesday, March 27, you submitted an agenda item for this evening's meeting to staff. Tuesday afternoon in my office, you and I, because I made sure to discuss this item with each and every one of us before I would even consider putting it on a council meeting agenda. The next day...
And I didn't agree with it.
That's fine, but the next day is when you submitted your proposal to staff for an agenda item, the next day, not the other way around. Thank you. I think this is masterful. This will make sure that we don't, that we optimize staff time, that we optimize lawyer time and money. It is well thought out and well vetted, and I am fully ready to support it. It's a huge step in the right direction to assuring that the city council meetings for Peachtree City are an opportunity for council to hear the agenda items in public, have our discussions in public, and vote in public, and also hear from the public in our public comment, in our workshops. I think I'm going to go ahead and speak for each and every one of the five of us when I say we read every email. We answer the phone calls. We have coffee meetings. We are very busy listening to our constituents. That's what we're here to do. I have probably two meetings a day on average. To imagine that our citizens don't feel that they are being heard, I humbly disagree, and I think this is a wonderful step in the right direction. Does anybody have any last thing to add?
I just, I mean, I was the first, and so I've been able to kind of hear from you guys. And just so y'all know, I would not be putting this forth if I felt like it was putting stuff behind closed doors. My effort here is to bring things out in front of our public as much as we can into open meetings. I truly value transparency. So the fact that where this agenda item originally, you know, it seemed like there was a consensus being made behind closed doors. This agenda has now been amended, where I feel like it helps with that. And council can bring any topic to the dais, and you can bring it the day of in Council Staff Topics. It's not limiting us as council members because in Council Staff Topics, you can bring up as many items as you want to talk about. And so you are not limited. In fact, I feel like it frees me up, and we can discuss anything we want. And I also think it allows us to counsel even more. My goal in this is to have a better relationship with my council members. For me personally, if I'm going to bring something and bring it up in Council Staff Topics, you will know that I will have gone to every single one of my council members. They will have known about this, and I would have a plan, and it would be very clear. I would present things in Council Staff Topics as if I were bringing something on an agenda. And what happens is you guys, as the public, it's not that you get to know that an item is coming on an agenda when that agenda comes out. You know that all of us, we have voted on it, or not voted because it's not, we're not voting, it is a consensus on a future actionable item. And so during the time that we discuss this and approve it, in order for it to officially go on an agenda, each of you has the ability to come and talk to us. And so it's not even a vote that we're saying, yes, we want this or no, we don't. It's that we're allowing staff to spend time on it. So I think, I personally think that this is a great compromise. It is a true effort to bring clarity, to be transparent. And I understand your points, and I respect it.
I'd like to make another comment.
You gotta wait for me. I'm your elder.
Go ahead.
You know, recently, we've seen articles in The Citizen, at least I have, in which I've commented on staff time and impacted to your schedule. When we all met is in the retreat, we gave the staff a list of, I don't know, 40-ish kind of topics, or not topics, projects that all of you have asked us for, from pickleball courts to dredging the lake to you name it. There's been 40 different projects that we tasked the city manager to come up with a plan on how we're going to get these done, with the SLOSS dollars and with the other project dollars that we had. And that's what they've been working on, and we've seen results of that. And anybody that stands up and says, "I would like to see a plan," needs just to go on the front page and go down the project list, and you can see the projects, and you get a sample of their current schedule. So that's really not, I think, a legal argument anymore. Legal is probably not the right word. But the argument is transparency, and we want to be transparent. We want to make sure you know what's going on and when it's going to get done. But part of the problem, putting other things on the agenda, is somebody puts something on the agenda, like I'm, I know that Suzanne is very interested at some point in time to get chickens allowed in Peachtree City. That's, believe me, that's more than just yes or no. You got to go through the safety of having chickens. You got to go through the amount of impact it's got on the schedule, the cost to do that, the staff's time and cost to do that. Those are the kinds of things we're trying to cut the costs on. So there's not impact on the cost of the staff time, nor impact on the cost of having the attorney to do things. We've talked about this when we went through our journey throughout the city and the bust, and I made comments about cost to the impact of the schedule. We can, we can change it all the time we want, but every time you complain about not having enough pickleball courts, remember somebody else put something on the agenda that bumped you. So I think we need to have a system in which we're going to stop putting things on the agenda that takes time away from the staff and costs the city more money. I'm done.
Thank you. Ms. Brown?
We already have the right to bring any issue we want up as council staff topics.
Right.
We also have the right to request that it then be added to the agenda. We don't need an ordinance change to do that. What this does is it requires you to get somebody else to agree just to put it onto the agenda. Again, I echo, you know, we're elected officials. We have the right to put things on the agenda. That should not... That should not change. This is an egregious takeaway of freedom of speech for council members to restrict us by forcing us to, just to put something on to the agenda. The discussion should be on the dais, in front of people, and yes, okay, putting it on council's topics may solve part of that, but I should have the right, as an elected official in this city, why are you trying to take away my right to put this, an issue, on to the agenda for discussion? It doesn't happen often enough to bankrupt the city, Frank, it just doesn't.
What does the current ordinance say?
Excuse me, we're not, excuse me, excuse me, we're not going to go back and forth. Does, Mr. Holland, do you have any final comment?
Yes, I do have a final comment. I mean, all of this so far has been about the discussion on this side of the dais. Am I right? That's what we've been talking about.
Direct your comments to the mayor, please.
Okay. That's what we've been talking about, but we've forgotten about the citizens. And we had that previously, where they can come to us, and where they can put on, we can put something on the agenda. Now we've got to go through a number of hoops to be able to do that. So I think that we've got a little bit of a restriction on our First Amendment rights of free speech and redress. I don't know if, you know, I'm not a lawyer, I just do a reading of this stuff, but it seems to me that there's a little bit of a restriction with this type of arrangement under this ordinance, this new ordinance. And for me, that's not what we're here for. We're here to do business of the city, and we're here to support our citizens. And I forget, I think sometimes we forget that.
Madam Mayor, I know you said not to go back and forth.
Go ahead, last comment.
That can't be left. The current ordinance that we worked on last year does just what they said. You get one more person, you put it on the agenda. It doesn't restrict anybody from doing anything. You just ask, "You, would you support it?" Yes, it's on the agenda. Why do we keep saying we're restricting people, we're taking away their rights? It's what's currently there.
All right, with that, Ms. Brown, I'm glad you and I could clear up the misunderstanding about what came first, our conversation together, and then following that, a submittal to put something on the agenda, just to be clear. We have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
No.
Motion carries, thank you. New agenda item 42401, Meadfield Softball Lighting Bid, and we will hear from Dave Borakowski to present the item.
Yes, good evening. Dave Borakowski, city engineer. Can everybody hear me okay?
Can't hear you, Dave.
How's that? Good, better? A little too tall. We're here tonight to request the council approve a bid to PSG to replace the lights at Meadfield, the lower pinwheel at Meadfield. Everybody knows probably that those are old halogen lights that need to be replaced. So we went out to bid, well, we hired an architect to do the design work for it, the photometrics and all that kind of stuff, new wires and everything to bring it up to standard. So we had that design done, and we put the project out to bid. We received three bids. And the three bids were PSG, Georgia Power, and West Georgia Lighting, the lowest bid being PSG at $340,912. We had some very specific things in this bid that we wanted to consider as far as for maintenance and those things. We wanted lights that could specifically be maintained from ground level with the ballasts and the drivers and whatnot, and only have to get bucket trucks or whatever in there just to replace the fixtures themselves when they would go out. And this will be a lot better as well, because these will be LEDs, and they will last a lot longer than the halogen lights. Recreation has had to replace them quite often. So that's the reason why we put that in the bid. We were very specific about what we were looking for, and we vetted the bids with our architect and their electrical engineer. And we approved a couple, approved two alternate fixtures, and one of those was the Carolina Lights with PSG. So we've reviewed everything, and we find that PSG's bid is acceptable, and we're recommending approval of them in the amount of $340,912 and zero cents for a change. And the funding is coming from ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan funds, and there are plenty of funds available. If there's any questions on this?
Counsel, I'll take a motion in a second, and then we will discuss. Can I get a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt this. Is it adopted or approved?
Approved.
Approved, okay. We approve this motion 042401, Meadfield Softball Light Bid to PSG of $340,912.
Second?
I have a motion in a second. Counsel, any questions or discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. New agenda item B, 42402, State Route 54 and Lake Peachtree Bridge Project Change Order. And presenting the item is Dave Borakowski.
Back again. Yes, we're recommending that council approve a change order on this project. Everybody probably knows, is familiar with the project that's going on out here on State Route 54 in front of the city hall in Lake Peachtree. Basically, we started construction, put in the path detour that everybody's familiar with, with the barricades and everything, and Kiwett, our contractor, started work. And then as part of the normal procedure, they put in for lane closures for, through GDOT, to be able to do a lot of the different things that need to be done out there. We have to bring in cranes to build cranes, basically, to lift the old bridge out and put the new one in. So the procedure is to apply for those lane closures through GDOT, and when we told them about how long it was going to take to put in the, drive the piles, and that's probably the longest part of the project, is to actually drive the piles for the new bridge. When we told them how long that was going to take, about eighteen days or so, they kind of went a little crazy. They did not want to have just one lane through that area for that amount of time, even though it was just going to be during off-peak hours during those times. So we had anticipated being able to do it with just one lane, but they would not approve that. So we had to go back to the drawing board, basically, and come up with other alternatives. They requested, you know, maybe we could do the drive piles at night, but that just wasn't an option, being so close to residential areas. And then talked about building the construction site out into the lake, and that wasn't an option either. That was going to be like two or three times more expensive, and permitting with the core and everything, so that just wasn't going to work. So we came up with a different idea of taking out portion of the existing grass median that's there in the project area, and that way we can build two lanes through the worksite and be able to satisfy GDOT's requirements. So that's what we come up with. And, you know, just like anything nowadays, nothing is cheap. So the change order is fairly substantial. We've got 29 cents in this one. So, but there is a lot of work that is involved in that. There's demo, new paving, new curb and gutter, moab, de-moab, all kinds of things. So there is a lot of work that goes in, that's going to go into this. So we are recommending approval of this change order so that we can continue on this project. It's a 2017 SPOSS project, and there are adequate funds available for this overage. And we do have a representative from Kiwett here tonight, if there are any specific questions that I wouldn't be able to answer.
Thank you. Counsel, I'll take a motion in a second, and then we can discuss.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve item number 042402, State Route 54 and Lake Peachtree Bridge Project Change Order in the amount of $281,596.29.
I'll second that.
Any discussion or questions?
I have a comment.
Sure.
It appears that, and I know we've talked a little bit about this, Dave, it appears that we had our arm broken on this by GDOT. We just had to do something. We just couldn't just leave eighteen days of one lane. Basically, they said, "No go." Is that right?
Yes, they were adamant about that, that they were not going to let that with the number of vehicles that everybody's aware that we have on 54, there's over forty-seven thousand vehicles a day. Yes, they were just not going to, not going to agree to that.
Thank you, Dave.
All right, any other questions, comments, or concerns? I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you.
New agenda item C, 42403, Resolution of Support for FEMA Safer Grant. And the item will be presented by Will Harbin.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Counsel. This resolution before you is essentially saying that we're asking for support from council in our efforts to apply for the FEMA safer grant. The FEMA safer grant will provide funds for us to hire firefighters. The purpose of these firefighters will be to staff the Station 85 on the south side of the city that was approved in the 2023 SPOSS. We are going to be asking for nine firefighters. The application period closes fairly soon, April 12th. They will provide up to, or not up to, but they will provide thirty-six months of salary for the firefighters if we are awarded this grant. That is essentially it. We want support from the city and from you guys, because it shows a commitment to keep these firefighters on the payroll even beyond the thirty-six months, and that may look good on our application.
Thank you. Counsel, I'll take a motion in a second so that we can discuss.
Madam Mayor, I will make a motion that we approve the resolution of support for FEMA safer grant, item number 042403.
Second? I have a motion in a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
You might want to explain to the citizens why we're hiring these nine staff and what they will be doing after the three years ends, just so that they understand, because I mean, that came out in council talk, or in the two-by-twos.
Sure.
And I think that they might better understand what we're looking to bring on nine new firefighters for.
Right. So as I said, we are going to be opening Station 85 in the coming years, and we don't have adequate staff to put down there to run the fire engine. We currently have staff that is running the ambulance at our temporary Station 85. So when stations open, we have a brand-new fire engine that was also voted for in the SPOSS. We don't have anybody to staff it. So we are requesting nine personnel to staff that fire engine, and we're not going to close that station in three years, so that we need to keep them on, and they need to staff that engine.
So the only other comment I have is just so the citizens know, bringing the staff on board and getting them familiar with the department and fully trained and up to speed means that as soon as we open the doors of the new firehouse, they're ready to go.
All right, last comment?
Yes, I do have one last comment. Chief, thank you very much for doing this. This is wonderful for our cities to give them a little bit more safety of having a brand-new fire station on the south side. I was looking at the mathematics, you know, I always look at those kinds of things. It looks like this will be somewhere between two and a half and three million dollars of a grant over three years. Is that approximately right?
Yes, sir. It's to cover salary and associated benefits, and that's the calculation. We have, we hire firefighters and firefighter EMPs paramedics, so the average wage that we calculated was about $100,000, give or take, for each.
So that's $900,000 per year for three years, and that's stuff that the taxpayers don't have to pay. Now, we don't have that grant yet. We got to apply for it.
Yeah, it is a competitive grant, yes.
This is wonderful that you guys are doing that. Please, go find more grants like that.
We're trying our best.
All right, I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries, and you have our full support.
Thank you.
Thank you. New agenda item D, 42404, Resolution in Opposition of TDK Extension, presented by, the item will be presented by Suzanne Brown.
First, let me set the record straight. No one on the city council suggested extending TDK Boulevard, and neither did any city staff. That's been kind of bantered about incorrectly. But the issue of extending TDK Boulevard across Lynn Creek and into Coeida County has been a hot topic in Peachtree City for more than twenty years. In my campaign, I promised to support the preservation of the special planned community we have and to resist urbanization. Nothing stinks of urbanization more than massive traffic running through peaceful streets. Extending TDK Boulevard into Coeida County would be a boon for them and a disaster for us. We cannot maintain our quality of life here if we throw our plan out the window to benefit another county. Prior administrations dating back to 2003 initially looked at the intercounty connection as being favorable for both counties. But that was when the southeast portion of Coeida County was mostly agricultural, and any residential lots were multi-acre plots. Nearly twenty years ago, council members learned that within a few miles of TDK, they were planning to build just under one million square feet of commercial development, plus several housing areas with about 3,950 housing units. As a result, Peachtree City council members abandoned the plan to extend TDK Boulevard into Coeida County. They realized it would do far more harm than good. The slight reduction in State Route 54 traffic would be dwarfed by the massive increase in traffic on both State Route 54 and TDK in the years following the buildout of the proposed commercial and residential development in Coeida County. By 2007, Mayor Logstern had reversed his stance and removed the TDK extension from our transportation plans after learning about how many vehicles would enter the city via the TDK extension. Although some of those vehicles were projected to turn north onto State Route 74, many would continue on to Crosstown Drive, past Braylon Village, across Peachtree Parkway, past Oak Grove Elementary School, and out of Peachtree City via Ebenezer Road. The negative impact of the volume of traffic traversing Peachtree City on city-owned streets would be devastating for our repaving costs, but the commercial and residential development being proposed would have a massive negative impact on every level of commercial operation in Peachtree City. Many small businesses, including restaurants and all types of small shops, could be affected. Many Peachtree City businesses could suffer greatly from the development, and it provides no new revenue for Peachtree City. The resulting negative impact from the loss of county sales tax revenue, however, would severely impact the Peachtree City budget and would likely result in significant large increases in the mille rate to make up for the lost revenue. Thus, property taxes for residents as well as commercial and industrial property owners in Peachtree City would need to be raised. Peachtree City councils took action to block the extension of TDK, and they asked Fayette County to remove it from their transportation plan. As recently as March 21st of 2019, the Peachtree City Council unanimously approved a resolution in opposition to the TDK Boulevard extension. Five years ago, that resolution was signed by Vanessa Fleisch, Kevin Madden, Terry Ernst, Phil Prebor, and Mike King, none of whom are on the current council. It is essential to note that a resolution of one council does not bind the actions of another future council. Think presidential executive orders. One president can pass an executive order, and it can be removed by the next. They are not binding, and that is the reason why we need a new resolution signed by this council. Mayor Leonard and Councilman Holland are working on behalf of the entire city council to establish a State Route 54 Court Study Committee consisting of members representing Coeida County, Fayette County, Sharpsburg, Fayetteville, and Peachtree City. The State Route 54 road easement is wide enough to add another traffic lane in each direction from the 5474 intersection to the west and into Coeida- into Coeita County near Fisher Road. Adding another lane is feasible and should help our traffic volume, actually, to read, the volume would be the same. It would help the density. It would also help if Coeita County improved Fisher Road from State Road fifty-four thirty-four north to I eighty-five and got a dedicated exit entrance to handle Coeita County commuters traveling to Atlanta. A proposal coming from five areas affected by the traffic should gain more attention than a proposal coming from just Peachtree City. That's why we put together the attempt to have this multifaceted committee. But the same traffic study could also open the door for Coeita County to press for TDK Boulevard to be extended. For me, that is not an option that I would ever vote for, and that is why I want this council to unanimously pass this resolution that we oppose the extension of TDK Boulevard into Coeita County. Any county or municipal partners who choose to work with us must understand that extending TDK into Coeita County is not an option that is on the table. And quite honestly, anyone on this council who wants the TDK Boulevard extension to remain as an option is not working for what is best for Peachtree City and our citizens. By taking that out of the discussion, we can work to solve the State Route fifty-four traffic issues by widening State Route fifty-four. I promise to look at long-range impacts. I refuse to work towards solving one problem and then causing another in the process. There are many indicators that officials from Coeita County have not abandoned their hope to get TDK Boulevard extended so they can build massive commercial and residential developments on thousands of acres on the edge of Peachtree City. Mayor Larned and Clinton Holland met with John Riedelbach, chairman of the Coeita County Commissioners. He said something to the effect of, "Oh, and if you wanna extend TDK Boulevard, we're open to it. We simply cannot open up TDK Boulevard into Coeita County. And if signing this resolution means Coeita County will refuse to work with us, then so be it. We can do it without them. Extending TDK is not negotiable."
Thank you for presenting the item. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the resolution as written.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Now, for discussion, counsel.
Just to set the record straight, Madam Mayor, while Susan likes to make concerns out of nothing, I do believe we should sign it. But I would tell you that this is, this is a dead issue. It's been, we've got three different referendums already done. We own all the land on the other side of the water. They can't build out here at all without either them taking the land from us or us giving in. So, she can say all she wants to, that, "Oh, my God, the fire is on," but it's not gonna happen. None of us want it to happen. None of us are willing to let it happen. She's not the only one on the council that says no. So, I would say we should go ahead and sign it.
Thank you. Mr. Holland?
No, I don't have any comments.
Ms. Johnson?
I would agree. I think we all, none of us want it open.
Yeah. Couple comments. This week, we are seeing in the newspaper, the Georgia Legislature has ended their session, and all the legislators in the state level who are not coming back are saying their goodbyes. And it's been covered extensively in the paper. And here, I couldn't help but noticing some words of advice from Georgia state legislators, and I'm quoting, "One of the things I learned about new people coming in is that they're rushing. They want everything so quickly," he said. "But that's not the way it works." Another, "Building relationships takes time, and you can't get anyone on your side or supporting your bill without having those relationships first." And finally, "Listen to the people that have been here for years. They know what they're talking about," he said with a smile. "It may sound like that's old school, but it works." The very fact that this found its way to a city council meeting agenda is an insult to a community partner that we had just begun to work with, to consider partnering for money and support for, to compel Coeita County to, to make Fisher Road four lane up to Interstate eighty-five, to compel Coeita County to, or invite Coeita County to work with us on a transportation study of Highway fifty-four. We had an email from a former council member of eight years who wrote us the following, "Council, why another TDK resolution? For decades, Peachtree City has made all of the stakeholders aware of our opposition to the TDK extension. The excessive fifty-four seventy-four traffic is a regional problem that is going to require teamwork to solve. As I see it, the resolution is unnecessary and will simply alienate the decision-makers that you need to work with. I respectfully ask that you be part of the solution instead of part of the problem. Work professionally with our neighbors to find alternate ways for traffic to flow through and around Peachtree City into Coeita County other than fifty-four seventy-four and TDK seventy-four." I will add to what Councilmember Distadio said, "Peachtree City owns the tract of land that stands between Peachtree City and Coeita County. I was a council member for many years, and we secured that tract when I was on city council." So, for those reasons, yeah, sure, I'll pass the resolution, and it will prove to be a very costly resolution, and we can do better. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Public hearings, we have none. Council staff topics.
I have one item, Madam Mayor.
I have. Okay.
Sure.
Do you want me to go first?
Mr. Strickland.
Go ahead. We received information from the county about the Redwine Tunnel project. That's a county project going on on the south side of the city. We've discussed it in council meetings before, probably two to three years now. What they're asking is that they're getting close to the point that they're ready to bid out, drop, getting the construction done to drop the tunnel into Redwine. What they wanna comment on, and this is not, it's not our decision because it's a county project, but they did reach out to ask what we felt about, they wanted to try to get the project done this summer while school was out because Redwine Road will have to be closed for four weeks at least while they drop the tunnel in, hence why they wanted to try to squeeze it in during summertime with, with the Stars Mill complex being down there, high school, middle school, and elementary school. They're not gonna be able to meet that deadline, so they could bid it out and do the work while school is in session, which would be in the fall. Or they're asking, is there a preference to do it as fast as possible, get it done in the fall, or hold off and wait until next summer, which would be over a year from now, to then do the work then? And again, this is just the preference of us to them because it is their project. So, I would like some feedback so we could type something up to the county to let them know what our preference would be.
There is, can you talk a little bit about what the detour would be?
Well, the detour, there's no specific detour right now. Like, it's not, they don't have a official plan. But just looking at the map, the detour would be going Robinson, down Holly Grove, and then back to seventy-four via Holly Grove. So, the detour would go into Peachtree City, which is why I'm assuming why they want an opinion from us, since it will affect our roads.
For how long?
Up, four weeks at least, a month.
Do you remember what the traffic count was on Redwine Road there? It was either nine thousand or eleven thousand. I can't remember what, which one.
Somewhere around there, yeah.
Yeah. Which means nine thousand cars a day going through there, and that would be that, as they put that tunnel in, it would shut down traffic for four weeks, twenty-four hours a day. Because once you dig a hole, you can't drive through.
Which will happen either way.
Right.
But it's a matter of whether it's in school.
Whether it's during school. Well, I would assume, I think rightly so, that the traffic during the summer is less.
A little less.
The question is...
At least twice a day.
What's the negative impact if we delay the whole thing until the summer of twenty-twenty-five?
I mean, if I was, if I was the county, the faster you bid something out, the cheaper the price. Like, prices are always rising. So, and they've been working on the project for years at this point, so I'm sure they're ready to get it done. So, and they're also getting feedback from the Board of Education as well on their opinion.
Personal opinion, having done construction projects all my life, you'd rather do them in the summer than in the fall. Number one. Number two, I think you're gonna get a better cost ultimately during the summer than you would in the fall. While it's gonna have an impact on the, on the kids, I certainly appreciate that. Nobody wants to have their kids out of school or have to drive them back and forth. But I just think it's gonna be a lot easier and less opportunities for having construction delays, which are gonna cost more money and have a more impact on the kids anyway. So, I don't have a vote, but I would make a comment. I think it's easier to do it in the summer.
Anyone else?
Yes, I do. Intrum City Manager, I would say definitely move it over to the summer because there's been still lots of discussions in regards to the viability of the project. When I go to the transportation committees at Fayette County, I sit in on those and listen to what they have to say, and there's still some things up in the air. So, I think at this point, moving it to the next season might be viable for looking at alternatives.
I think I agree. I think the summer, I mean, right now, we don't have a tunnel, and even though it's not ideal, we're surviving without it. Being a mom of school-aged kids, and I have a sister that teaches down there, I know how much, how much disruption a roundabout caused for a period of time to those students and teachers. So, I would probably say the, the summer as well, although I can see pros and cons for both sides.
Personally, I agree. And as of August of twenty-twenty-five, or, excuse me, twenty-twenty-four this summer, I'll have one grandchild in Rising Star and two in Stars Mill, and they will be going to school via golf cart. So, and/or...
Their parents will?
They actually take the bus on occasion, too.
Oh, the horrors.
Yeah, I know. So embarrassing to them, I'm sure. However, there are many, many reasons to try to do it during the summer, just because of the impact with the school. I did reach out to Randy Hoff. He had not heard about it. I sent to him what we had received, and he was gonna try to find out from the school board and let me know, but he has not contacted me back to let me know what they were looking at.
I would concur with summer as a recommendation, knowing that it's not our decision.
Okay.
Yeah.
We will, we will let the county know that.
Anything else, Mr. Strickland?
That's all I have.
All right. Mr. Holland?
Yeah, I'm, I just devoted no on the new change to bring things up in council topics, but I'm gonna be the first to use the new methodology that we have, a new procedure that we have that was put together by Councilwoman Johnson. So, I know that, having spoken to quite a few of the people here in the city, that they are seriously wanting to get into a recreation committee, to opine on what's being done by the outside consultants, just to be a sounding board for the outside consultants. So, I would like to at least have us look at, in the future, very near future, putting together that recreation committee of citizens to help out and help the people get some citizen input into what the stakeholders have already given to our third-party company that does this.
My understanding is that we do plan that as soon, after we have the Recreation Master Plan results, that we could be talking about it once the Recreation Master Plan is released, and we can discuss as a council what all the next steps will be, including budgetary considerations, pickleball, staffing, facilities, and, and certainly, part of that conversation at that time would be a consideration for a recreation council of some kind.
I, I heard that before, and I concur that that is a project that, something that you've said before, Madam Mayor, but I think that sometimes it may be better to have them involved in the process as opposed to the solution, and then try to opine on something that's already so-called been decided in a final report. So, putting it out there beforehand might be better for the kinds of results that we want for all of the citizens. And that's the reason I had asked to do it beforehand instead of after. Just, that's my opinion.
Anybody else?
I agree with that, actually. I think that getting more people involved before the final thing comes out to kind of be involved in terms of making fine-tuning aspects to it, or to at least be involved in input, is not necessarily a bad thing. I think it's a good thing.
Mr. How, Mr. Distadio?
I was just gonna say that I don't have a problem with letting the citizens know what's going on, and I'm not saying that they should have, wait until it's done and, and make comments on it. I'm just saying, if you've never had a committee develop something, you're, you're gonna be surprised. You've heard that joke about a camel that's developed by a committee comes out looking like an elephant. I think we can make a citizens' input. We've had committees that have made citizens' input, and I think that's good. But I don't think we wanna wait till the end either. But I think we need to be careful and not just open it up and start getting all these inputs and getting everything confused.
I can agree with you a hundred percent, but...
Ms. Johnson?
Well, it seems to me that we just had a presentation on this where this topic came up to Cindy Benacci, is that right? And so, when we were, she, we were, we asked her about a committee, it seems like she was saying, "Well, this is why we're getting, you know, citizen input and doing a survey and getting stakeholders." It was my feeling at the time that her, her opinion was that we don't need it then. I'm not saying we don't need one, but I wanna make sure that, you know, our city's invested so much into having a company come in here and do a recreation master plan. I wanna make sure that if, if we're having a committee, that we talk to her and see exactly where and when something like that would be appropriate, so we're not throwing a wrench in things, and that we're working with this company that we've paid so many of our tax dollars to bring in.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Yeah. Also, untold staff hours, untold staff hours in dealing with any kind of committees that we put together, whether it's the Teen Political Committee or some of the others that we've talked about, Public Arts Committee, there is untold. And I would not at all think that we're ready to have this conversation until we understand what the staff time would be and when that time might be available. I would think respectfully, Mr. Holland, we should keep this on the forefront. I'm very excited. We're all eager to get that, just look at the pickleball players and try and imagine how eager everybody is to get the results of our Recreation Master Plan. I think I would defer to Councilmember Johnson and to City Manager Justin to get a handle on what kind of staff time is involved before we make any decisions.
I don't disagree with that, Madam Mayor. What I'm trying to do is make a distinction between stakeholders and citizens. You're gonna say, "Oh, they're the same people." And they're not the same people. Yes, they might be a citizen, but they're a stakeholder. They're in charge of an organization, which is maybe pickleball or baseball or whatever it may be, and they're gonna be involved in that. And it's more than just the sports side of this. You've got runners, you've got bikers, you've got walkers, and they don't have a, they don't have a stake in this. They don't have, they don't have stakeholders, so to speak. Those are your average citizens. So, what we've done is we've gone to the stakeholders, which are important people. But I would like to see some of the, please don't take this the wrong way, average, run-of-the-mill people who are out biking and running and doing things like that, get them involved in the speaking to our recreation third-party vendor. That's, that's the reason why I wanna make a distinction between those two. And that's, that was really my whole point.
That's not unlike the path, the golf cart path, fit citizens.
That's correct.
Just a minute, please. I'd like to hear from our city clerk.
I think I'm having some difficulty here. I did wanna add, while, and this was presented in the meeting, while there were stakeholder meetings, there were also residents, approximately two thousand residents who actually filled out the survey. So, there were, it wasn't just stakeholder meetings that were done. There were actually represented two thousand residents that submitted the survey along with the stakeholder meetings. And I think that's what Ms. Benacci was trying to explain, that along with the stakeholder meetings, there were also residential input from over two thousand residents. And I think what she was trying to say was, the plan is gonna be, is gonna come together and be shown to the council, but the final iteration of, of the details of what the plan is, is probably the best time... what the plan is, is probably the best time, of what the steps are to accomplish the plan is probably the best time for a committee, not prior to them presenting the information. But presenting the information doesn't necessarily mean that council is approving each and every step of what's going to happen with your dollars or in the different facilities. It's just providing information of what the citizens and the stakeholders both wanted to see in the city, if that provides some information. I don't know if our city manager wants to piggyback on it.
Yep. I agree. I was gonna, if nobody brought it up, I was going to say, we did it, the company has done a survey hearing back from 2,000 of our average residents, their opinions on recreation.
I do, I've seen that data, and if I may, Madam Mayor, I'd seen that data, and I think it's wonderful. But those are structured questions, as opposed to an open forum where you're saying, what else can we be talking about? And so that's the reason why I wanted to have a little bit more personal citizens' input into the Recreation Master Plan.
At this time, my position is that we have to let the system, the process play out. Staff's on it. They've got it. They've got a plan, and we expect to hear something by, what, this summer or late summer as far as a new Recreation Master Plan for us to consider. We'll be making budgetary considerations, staffing considerations, facilities considerations. I think at that time, we can form any committees that we feel we need in order to carry it out and prioritize. So I'm not prepared to encumber staff at this time.
I would agree with you, Madam Mayor. I seem to remember when the citizens got a committee together at our request to look at the golf cart paths, and where did that lead us? It didn't, we didn't get everything done. I think we need to have their input absolutely, and we ought to have it at the right time, but not just throw it out there and let everybody who plays pickleball, for example, come, come in and decide on how we're going to go with the master plan. The master plan is a master plan for all recreation. Okay, I should shut up.
All right. I want to thank staff for the beautiful landscaping in front of City Hall. In fact, the building looks great, the interior of the building looks great, and our buildings, Buildings and Grounds are public. Buildings and Grounds crew have been out there working tirelessly. It looks absolutely spectacular. I also want to mention that our next city council meeting will be April 18th, Thursday, April 18th. That is the third Thursday as usual, but it will be held at 9:30 in the morning here instead of 6:30 PM. Likewise, in May, our second meeting of the month will be Thursday, May 16th, but instead of being 6:30 PM, it'll be 9:30 in the morning, and again, June 20th. Any other council staff topics?
I, I have one thing. Oh, you can go. Go ahead.
You can go ahead.
Okay. Keith Larson gave a very interesting comment, and it's something I've talked about before. And I really think we're going to have to have a discussion with regard to updating the ordinance that was last updated in 2005 regarding the truck limitations. I, I think it's going to be exacerbated by the displaced left-hand turn construction this summer with too many trucks possibly attempting to use Macduff as an alternate route. And if we don't have any signs posted with regard to what size truck can go through there, I think that's going to create a problem. And then, of course, what we just talked about with the Redwine. If, you know, Redwine doesn't have, they may have a truck designation, but Robinson doesn't, and Holly Grove doesn't. So if that tunnel project goes through, we're going to see trucks, you know, like, definitely going on roads that we need to really seriously consider updating that ordinance, I think, so.
Anything else? Anybody else?
And thanks to Keith for doing all that research, because I don't have that kind of time.
And he does good research.
Yes. And the only other thing I want to say is, is Mr. Crofton still here? I'm so glad he made it to the hospital that night.
I just had a couple of things. One, I'm so excited that we're already saying so much in council staff topics. And I just want to mention, and just to maybe end this on a, a positive note that I think we can all agree on, this last week, we had the Rees Across America trailer out here, and I think that that's worth mentioning. That was the first time I've been able to experience that, and if you didn't, you were missing out. I appreciate Councilman Holland. I think he headed bringing that out, and I was able to go there and even, and pinned some of our veterans who came to visit, and it was very touching. And so I just wanted to thank Councilman Holland for doing that, and I, I hope they can come back in the future. That they, this company or this, this organization, they only have one trailer. I asked them, and they only have one, and it goes all around the US. So the, the fact that we were able to host it for a couple of days was a privilege.
Actually, you need to go.
You need to go to a Rees Across America. I mean, the Knights of Columbus does it out in noon in, at the cemetery out there, and they did 700 Rees in one afternoon. But yeah, you can see what it's like.
And we do it over in Fayetteville, too.
I know.
And by the way, Kathy, who's sitting right there in the audience tonight, is one of the coordinators for the Rees Across America project at the Camp Memorial Cemetery, and was working out here at Drake Field. And they collected enough money that went into the donation bin to provide, according to Geraldine, she told me today, 61 Rees. That got added to the total, and the total for that cemetery at Camp Memorial is about 760 or so, and. Okay.
Seven twenty. Anything else, council staff topics?
I do know that coming up in the, about a month from now, we will be having a Memorial Day service here and at our, our City Hall. And Justin here has done a good job in organizing such much of this to coordinate between the service agencies of the American Legion, VFW, and City Hall. And it appears to be, going to be, am I correct? It's going to be quite an affair with a lot of, a lot of fanfare, and I think there's going, I heard there's going to be a flyover and all of that to honor those people who have passed on, and that Memorial Day ceremony will be here at City Hall on Memorial Day. I think it's nine o'clock?
Yes.
Okay. Justin will probably get more detail, but that's just an overview.
Thank you.
It's going to be in front of the fountain this year.
All right, anything else?
I've got some comments.
Certainly. Now's the time.
I'd like to take a moment and take the role of the elder statesman on the council. With the exception of the mayor, I've been on the council the longest. I was on the planning commission for 11 years and chairman for seven of these years. I've lived in Peachtree City for 24 years. I have a lifetime of leadership roles, so I believe I'm qualified to speak out. I would like to end by saying to all of you that I read the newspaper like you do, and quite honestly, I don't recognize the city anymore. I would like to know that where Steve Brown, who's a friend of mine, so I can say that as well, ever gets the thoughts that he uses for his topics. How does he know how each one of the council members thinks? Because he's always saying, I've heard about, or I think they know this. He's, who's told him that they know this? How does he know what individuals think? And what, what are they thinking now or when they wrote that? So whoever tells him can't know 100% what I'm thinking, and obviously, today, I've had a lot of people say, I'm not doing it right, so, fine. The city manager works for all city council members, not just for one, as it's been alleged. And those opinions, I think, are absolutely wrong, and they look bad for the city. We all need to just stop doing those things. And while I'm good friends with the editor over there, he takes anybody who wants to send in something, and he puts it in the newspaper. So we get a lot of people regurgitating things that they don't know anything about. I'm just wondering why we can't just stop and be the old city, Peachtree City that we used to be. In a recent article that Steve, that Councilman Holland edited or put out, many of us have grown up to know Bob Kernow very well. I believe he's a very honest and trustworthy person. I don't believe comments about that he's received, that it was something other than his relationships with his wife and family that made him decide to leave. That's not true. And I've addressed that directly with him on more than one occasion, and I believe what he's told me. So I think we just need to start working together, the, the council and the city staff, and stop these articles that are, that are just bad for all of us. Nothing's worse than having those kind of articles. Besides that, they're full of innuendo, and, and they're just typically blown out of proportion. Who would like to come here to live in Peachtree City after they've read the way the articles are? It hurts us to hire police, hurts us to hire the fire department, it hurts us to try to hire staff when they read these articles. Oh my God, I don't think I want to go to Peachtree City anymore because of what's been in the newspaper. So I just think we all ought to stop and start working together closer. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have executive session?
No, we do not.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I do have one item.
I'm so sorry.
You did not mention the GDOT Town Hall. So we do understand that residents have noticed that there are trees that are coming down in the, off 54 and 74, and that is to begin the process of the displaced left turn. We are working with GDOT to have a town hall on April 16th at 6:30 PM, where they will come out and answer any questions that our residents have about the displaced left turn that is going to be installed at 5474. We are finalizing all of the information. We do ask our residents to sign up to receive notifications on our website, follow the slice, or follow us on social media, and we will be pushing out information once all of the details are finalized. But as of right now, the date is April 16th, which is a Tuesday at 6:30 PM.
With the location to be announced.
That's correct.
All right, thank you very much. Sorry about that. Executive session, none. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A second? I have motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.